Good evening, I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the Chicken Ordinance Exploratory Committee Meeting, the Terre Haute City Council, it's Monday, October 21st, 2019, 4:34 PM, it looks like, little late, sorry about that. Michelle, would you call the roll?
I will. I left it in the office.
Oh, well, perhaps we can have everybody say their name and that they're here.
Let's do that.
Okay, I'll start, Martha Cross is present.
Curtis Saban, here.
Todd Nation, here.
Dana Gattick, with Purdue Extension, here.
Ellie Caldwell, here.
Patty Weaver, Master Gardener, here.
All present.
Debbie Floyd, from the City Animal Commission.
All present.
Okay, thank you. I think some of those folks did this as they were saying their names. Todd Nation, Curtis Saban and I are here as members of Terre Haute City Council. All the other people here are here either as private citizens, but some of them do have a role in the community or in their job, as Debbie is on the Animal Control Board, correct? City Animal Commission. Animal Control Commission, excuse me. Dana is from Purdue Extension and has some special skills and information there. Ellie and Pat are both members of our community who are interested in this issue. So, that's how we all got here tonight. This is an exploratory committee, what that means is we're not a standing or non-standing committee of the Terre Haute City Council, we're just, have called this to get some input from these individuals because of their special interests and special skills, and also from the public, because there is some interest in having some sort of change in our current ordinance on animal control as it relates to chickens particularly. Nothing is going to be decided tonight, I understand that there were some reports in various parts of the press earlier today that we were actually taking a vote on an ordinance tonight, that is not going to happen and was never planned to happen. And really, all we're going to be doing tonight is to be talking about some issues, sharing some information. If, as a result of this committee meeting, we have a recommendation as a committee to make to the city, we will do that and we'll vote on that recommendation at some later date. But at this point tonight, we're just in an information gathering stage, so. Does anybody, especially those here at the table, have any questions about that, or comments about it? Okay. We have, since the crowd isn't large, I didn't put the sign up list out, but we do have some time on the agenda for public comments. I'm happy to take those comments, but would ask that if you have comments to make, that you limit them to three minutes. People are volunteering their time here tonight, we don't want to, we want to do a thorough job, but we don't want to take advantage of people's time to hear the same comments over and over. So if you hear someone else making a comment that you thought was important, you might reference it and say you support that, but we would ask that you try to bring us new information if you would like to make a comment as a member of the public. Also, if you would state your name and your address before making that comment, we would appreciate it. So if you just want to come to the microphone and make a comment, that would be, this would be your time to do that. Yeah, please, Laurie, go ahead.
Yes. I'm Laurie Elliott, I'm at 3279 East Margaret Drive, AKA Chickery. So I have special zoning for our animals, so I'm allowed to have chickens. And I just got them this year, for the first time. And the only thing I wanted to mention-
I'm obviously in favor of them, but we're having a really nice time with them, they're really sweet. And they are borderline pets for me. We ordered nine hens and got one rooster, and eight hens. So now we have a rooster, and I already have zoning, I'm going to keep my rooster, I have zoning for him, and that's fine, he's so far away from anybody else, I don't think anybody's going to complain, but somebody in a different neighborhood might. So if I were going to get rid of a rooster, I'm not sure I'd really know who to call or where to go, so maybe in your guidelines, you could put, hey, if you get a rooster by accident, I mean, they hatch and nail chickens out in the same day, so the sexing isn't perfect, and you're likely to eventually get a rooster. So if I ever did want to get a rooster, I'd like to be able to call maybe the City Animal Control, or Dana, or somebody may have a list of people who will come and get your rooster for prey, and then, and then it's done, and you don't have to feel like they're going to be abused, or, I mean, they're probably going to be eaten, I realize that. But anyway, that was just my feedback, like if you could include a way to get rid of your rooster if you get one by accident.
Yes, and I think for purposes of the committee, if we want to have a little more freewheeling discussion here tonight than we often have it at City Council meetings, that's fine, so if somebody's speaking and you want to comment or ask them a question as they're speaking, I think, please feel free to do that. So, yeah.
Hi, my name is Deborah Candelaria, I live at 1920 South 26th Street, and am in favor of chickens, and would concur with the statement regarding the eggs and not getting what you get in the mail. There is an auction, a livestock auction, that is held very frequently throughout the spring, summer, and fall in Covington?
Vetersburg.
In Vetersburg, and if you happen to get a rooster and you want to get rid of them, you can, you can, they'll go to a farm, most likely, they don't, people generally don't go there to buy them to slaughter them, so that is a humane disposal method that could be mentioned. There are livestock auctions throughout the state, almost always. Same thing regarding the sound, we have chickens, we've never had a complaint from our neighbors, we keep them clean, and we keep their lot clean. You could go behind our fence and you wouldn't, you wouldn't know we have them. So there definitely needs to be stipulations, I think, in any ordinance regarding space and maintenance of them, just like any animal. I think it's a good learning experience, if Purdue could tie into this, this is, this was a way for us when our children were younger, we didn't live on a farm, they had friends that they went to school with that were in 4-8, this gave them some, a talking point and a way to transition into that. So there, there are a lot of benefits to it. Another thing, I don't know if you use all of your eggs, we don't, we give to MacMillan Adult Daycare all the time, we give to Catholic Charities, our neighbors if we think they need it, so there are definitely benefits there. Something else, we do occasionally go to different places in the community and get refuse vegetables for scraps for, so that's another, we're not just throwing it on a dump, we're actually putting it to good use and producing eggs that are much better quality than you can get livestock. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Christina Ridgeway, I'm at 2712 Crawford Street, and I am in support of allowing chickens. I've been looking at different codes, I think Indianapolis's codes regarding chickens are a better model than say Bloomington's, that are, would be a lot more work for code enforcement to keep track of. I also want to draw attention to some sections in the city code, specifically that already regard poultry and reference them being allowed. Section 5-80 specifically bans poultry from city parks. Why would there be language specifically banning them if they were not allowed elsewhere in the city? And then section 5-81 allows for impounding poultry that are found on public property, and then returning them to their owners. Why would they be returned to owners in the city if they are not allowed in the city? I also would support a license system for coop owners, and to have some sort of visible license on the property, either attached to coop, or on the fence surrounding it, to make it easy to identify coops that are licensed and in compliance with code.
I just want to ask a question, Eddie, do you know those, are you aware of those, this is Eddie Selling, who's our city attorney, are you aware of those codes?
I don't know those two off the top of my-
They sort of sound like they may be really old ones.
1989, I believe.
Really?
I do know the-
They're not part of the animal-
The section of the animal control, so it may be part of First April Park rules and regulations.
Yeah, but, good research. Thank you. Anyone else? I might say, Eddie, please come forward, but Eddie's coming forward, I might also say that should there ever be an ordinance introduced in front of the city council on this issue, you would also have the opportunity to make comment on that at that time, so this will not be the only opportunity anyone would ever have to make on this issue, so.
My name is John Candelaria, I live at 1920 South 26th Street. We've had chickens for many years now, and as long as we keep them clean, we don't, we've never encountered a problem. Now, we had a neighbor that did get chickens at one time, and they had a couple of roosters and a couple of wavered hens, and they would get out and they would walk the neighborhood freely, and you'd turn down our street and encounter these chickens in the road. And they really didn't bother anybody, but they're still running around, you know, that can be a nuisance at times. Other than that, we don't, we don't have a use for a rooster, so we don't keep one. I know that larger municipalities like Madison, Wisconsin, allow chickens. Albuquerque, New Mexico, they have an ordinance against chickens, but they have adopted a very tolerant view of it, and as long as they have two feet, two square feet of living space, they're okay with it. I've been to a number of residences then, that have chickens that don't have two square feet, and they get really cramped and cranky, you know, and it's harder to keep clean. And if they're kept clean, almost, almost never notice them, you almost never notice them. My chickens at home are quiet, the only time they ever squawk is when they're making an egg, and that's maybe for a minute or two, and then they quit. They don't get in the way of the dogs, cats, I don't, we generally don't have a problem with cats getting into them. If anything, the one problem that we have, that I think is, people don't realize it until they encounter it, is the hawks. They come and, they'll come and take your chicken, you know, because that's what they do, you know, so you have to take precautions.
I don't think you can legislate for that, though.
She has to take the precautions, you know? So, other than that, they're easy keepers, they don't eat very much, and they, you know, pay us back with great eggs, and they're not real hard to keep clean, you know? We keep mulch on the ground, and we change the mulch a couple of times a year, and, you know, very easygoing animals.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
I'm Vicki Wagner, from 3505 Ohio Boulevard. Some of my neighbors were discussing this over the weekend. I'm not aware that we have any poultry in our neighborhood, but the neighbors do not object to having chickens, and they certainly do like the idea of having bees in the community. There are some children who raise chickens for, for the eggs, and also for pets, and also I want to call to your attention that 4-8 does have a poultry project, so if you would restrict that, that would eliminate children in the city perhaps from being able to do that project, and it's a really nice one. And also, you know, I don't think that you would want to, to be the people who were the answer to this riddle, why did the chickens cross the road? Because it was the city limit and they had to leave. Thank you.
All we are saying is give pizza chips. Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Well, we'll turn this inward, which doesn't mean at some point we might just have a little more freewheeling discussion here, but we'll turn it inward. Some of the issues that were raised tonight already were ones that were raised previously when the bee ordinance was before us, and somebody have a, in the group here, have something they'd like to particularly respond to, or bring up that wasn't brought up in the public conference?
I'll start. This is a discussion that I've been part of, went and off now for a number of years within the council. I'm glad that we're taking it back up, I'm glad that this committee's been formed, thanks for doing that, Martha. There's, we have in front of us a draft that was prepared by the city attorney within the last couple of years, and it's, you know, it's a good starting point. One, you know, on the first page, chicken flock, to me, if you want to try to keep this simple, and this is a fairly simple ordinance that's being proposed, or, you know, that's in front of us as a starting point, but one of the things that really needs to be established is how big a flock is a reasonable size, how many breeds is, what's the number? And how do you determine that number? Is it tied to available square footage, we can account with a run, or is it just no more than X? Numbers that I've seen in other ordinances, I've seen six, I've seen eight, and I've seen up into the double digits too, low double digits, like 10, or 11, or 12, you know? But that said, I think that I would like to lean on people who keep chickens and have some specific knowledge here within the community of what they think is a reasonable number. Personally, I think it's probably somewhere around eight, but we did a similar thing with the member of Bee Hives, and when we started hearing from people who are actually keeping bees, I think a lot of my fellow council members' ideas about what a reasonable number is changed, in light of better information, so. I'd like to open it up to some of our fellow people, Purdue Extension, or folks that keep chickens.
No, you don't have to move, just talk.
And I should say, I should say too, that for the purposes of everything I talk about, I think we should use the word chicken and hen interchangeably, because I certainly am not proposing that we, that under any circumstances we have roosters inside the city limits, or that we codify the possibility of having that, whether it's accidentally happened and being overlooked, or, you know, ignored, or whatever, is another matter, but from my perspective, what the, I'm concerned with what the ordinance says, and it needs to be about hens, not roosters.
Well, I would chime in on two, a couple of things that you brought up, Todd. First of all, chickens is the overall, hens and roosters, it's like people and boys and girls. So probably we should clarify and say hen chickens, or chicken hens, or something in that order, so it's very clear. And quite frankly, I have a rooster not too far from my house, I live out in the country, and I hear him every morning, every afternoon, and sometimes at night, and I don't really like it. And when I lived in the country, I didn't like being woke up at 2:00 AM by the rooster either, so no roosters in my house. Sorry, my-
Barely getting beaten.
Oh, sorry. No, no roosters, I agree. The second is size, how many to get. Companies in town that sell chickens, hens, and roosters, they do both, usually have a cap of X amount for a certain amount of dollars. So we could do that, and use their caps, I think, not to mention companies, but the one that's south of town does four per price, and then the one that's over here on the east end does six for a price. So we could do a range of four to six, or four to eight, and let that kind of be a judgmental call then on the owner.
We probably only need to set the maximum.
Well, that'd be fine too, I, you know? And then as far as coop size, personally, we have, we have nine, because I bought for my, I bought extras. And you have to know how well eggs lay, and we found that some of them don't lay very well, so we only get eggs every other day, where we get other, the others lay daily. So that's kind of, but I would say the quantity would be kind of based on the family, so six is usually a very good number for four to six people in your family, that's an egg a day, which you don't, wouldn't eat that many, but you would, you know, for that size of a family, you would put in a meal probably about eight or so eggs anyway, so it works out. But, so that's my suggestions on quantities and roosters.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's pretty consistent with, I mean, I did some research lots of different ordinances, and it seems like generally, you know, the max seems to be around eight-ish, I mean, I saw a few that were more, but I felt like they were more rural areas. And then kind of the minimum was about four, which, I mean, I would probably lean more towards the six to eight range personally, just because too, when you go and buy them, you've got to buy usually four or six, and then a lot of times you might lose a chick, you know, here and there in that process. So, you know, I think that that's probably a pretty reasonable range, but I do think it's important to have, you know, a minimum amount of space for those chickens, so that they have a good amount of, of living space as well. So you've got kind of, and I know that's in this draft code that we have, is a minimum square footage per chicken, which is kind of a lot.
It was way too much.
It's a lot, I think it's a little excessive, but I do think you should have, I mean, I've seen some that were one by one, which I think is probably, might be a little less than what I would go with, but, but I think, you know, you could find a happy medium in there between what's in the, in this draft and, and one by one.
And we've seen 10, like 10 on a half acre, which, that's, if you've got a half acre lot, you can have 10.
And this is the minimum square footage, the federal guidelines say 1.2 square feet per chicken, that's pretty small.
But we've got, like, we've got a 24 by 24 foot area that's fenced off, they've got a coop in there, they've got two waterers, they've got two heaters, they've got heat in the coop, I mean-
How many chickens?
I beg your pardon?
How many chickens?
10 chickens.
We have nine, and ours is an eight by 10 coop, more than enough. It's really roosting space they need to roost. They don't sit on the ground, they, naturally they go in the trees, so you need roosting space for that many, and hen boxes. So usually it's, we have 10 to begin with, and we have four spots for them to lay. So it's kind of that measurement, so how much space is good to take up your roost, and then winter, you, you know, feed them and water them indoors, so you need those stations for them inside your coop. And then exterior space, we don't free range, we live in the country and we don't free range. I just don't want them tearing up my yard.
I mean, it's, their, their area is fenced in-
In town, you would have to have them fenced in, and so that usually is at least two to three times the size of the coop. And that's what we base ours on when we build ours.
And there's, I think there are that, I don't know, I don't know whether the city council can do this, but it almost seems like there should be some kind of coordination with Purdue to get some basic education about them, like, you have to clip their wings or they're going to fly. And you got to put some, you know, just some things that, that could be offered for education, so that we don't have people calling up and going, okay, now I need to get rid of these 10 chickens that I bought. They were cute when they were chicks, but now they're grown and I don't know what the heck to do with them.
So I offer programming, and I have for the past two years, and you have like 10 to 15 people show up, and you advertise at, not big box stores, but feed stores.
Like a roll cage?
Yeah, I didn't want to drop names, but like, right, right, so you advertise and people don't show up. Or it's at an inconvenient time, which I mean, I get, that's, that's programming.
Is it available, like, online also?
We don't have one through Purdue. I mean, this is something that could be developed, that you could do education, but it's, it's-
You know, putting a PDF on, on the, on the city council's website-
Right, and we could, definitely.
Or like you said, I mean, if you're going to do any kind of licensing, et cetera, that's the time to give out education, and say, hey, you want five minutes, can I give you some tips? And either refer them to someone in your office, or even someone in the community, there shouldn't be, you know, let's get an organization going of poultry, of hen owners in Terre Haute, and, you know?
So there are pamphlets and documentation to the Indiana Poultry Association, that's something that we can readily share, and I do think it's a good way to tie that if you want a license, take five minutes to take this online course and provide that education, so that people don't blindly walk into a commitment thinking, I think I got this, and then find out that they don't, and then you have like a spiraling situation, that the city is kind of responsible for tidying up. So that is an opportunity that we could look towards, using that license as a way to provide education.
I think it's important too, that we distinguish between the casual bird owner and somebody who's really going to take care of them. You know, like I said, the federal guidelines, if you have a chicken laying house, you're only, you only have to give them 1.2-
That's commercial.
-square feet, that's pretty small, man.
I think that's really geared towards commercial operations.
Right, exactly, and they're saying, we have, like, we have plenty of room, and that's all they do all day long.
Yeah, so I think that's what we're, we're trying to assist with, is the difference between the, the person who is interested and advocates, and then the casual bird owner, because we want that casual bird owner to be held the same as the committed people who do it right. So I think that's what we're trying to narrow down.
At the organization that I volunteer and do multiple hours of every day, we actually had a training on the, on the guidelines at the garden, and they had to actually come to that sign in, sign out, or sign in that they came, and actually had them, had them at a meeting, more or less, so that they, we could go over the guidelines with them, so that everybody's on the same page. So that could be part of the policy, or the ordinance, is that they actually have to attend a public meeting, and you have it once, you know, you'd have multiple public meetings for those who are interested in having a license, and make it a requirement for licensing. And that would get the education, and you and I could run that and do that. So that would be an option as well.
Okay, well, and, and I think with the bee ordinance as a possible model for part of this, at least, there are organizations that were identified during those hearings that provides some of this education, and were, I don't think became part of the ordinance at all, but they are continuing to provide that education and help people out with that, so. I think we all recognize that for any kind of animal, whether it's a pet, or perceived as a pet, or somehow a little differently, that's good information to have available to everyone, whether or not it becomes an actual requirement of the licensing process. So I'm, I'm still a little foggy about what people who have been involved with this see as the size kind of requirement. Again, as being, in this case, a minimum size, obviously if you have a big place and you want a big, you know, you want a big size, that's terrific, but I think I feel, still feel a little foggy about that. Do you have anything more specific you want to say about that?
We had, in my, when I lived in Illinois on a farm, 37 and a half acre farm, we had chickens, and we had a corn crib that was stored corn on the husk for feeding the animals when we, it came with the house. So we had that, and it was about 10 feet by about five, and we had 20 chickens in there. But it's, like I said earlier, it depends on how much roosting. And so we just had about, it's hard to remember, about six by four foot roosting, that's several feet off the ground, so at night they can roost, because that's how they sleep. And so, and then we had an egg laying area that was, we just busted through the wall and built a place where they could lay their eggs. And I think we had eight or 10 nesting holes for 20 or 25 chickens, I can't remember how many we had, but it was a big sized flock. And again, they were not free range. Free range tends to, they tend to wander, and then if they get dark, they, they stop wandering and they don't get in in time, or they'll lay eggs out in the field, or out in the, out in the area in your yard somewhere, and you won't know where the egg laying nest is, and then that brings in wild critters that you don't want. So I would not have free range chickens in town, period, because unless your yard is fenced in, they're going to free range the neighborhood, and you wouldn't want that to happen. So fencing a small area, and our fence, I don't remember Jimmy, was it four feet high? Our fence, it was a- Our fence, it was a cattle panel that we put chicken wire on, so I think they're four feet high. And, um, by ten, and we've used, uh, five or six panels and that's how big our run is. And it's attached to the hen house, so we open it in the morning and close it up at night and they go into the house. Chickens are very habit forming. They do the same thing every day and every night. So they'll always go in the hen house to roost, to sleep, and they'll go in the hen house too, to lay. And we have nine chickens in a eight by ten foot space, no problem. And we store hay in that space as well, so it also has a storage spot.
I mean, I think when you think about that, so that's, you're talking ten square feet per chicken, you know, and I think, I mean, that's probably even more than is absolutely necessary. I mean, I think even if you took this code here and said that, you know, the requirement, because you're, I mean, in this, this sample code includes the coop and the run. And if you said, you know, that it was, you know, six square feet or eight square feet per chicken, I still think that would be pretty reasonable, um, you know. And, and I think the thing is too, that, you know, kind of being mindful that whatever the, the code says, we don't want it to be so restrictive that you can't get a coop because your yard's not huge, you know? I mean, when I think about the average side of the, size of a city lot and whether or not somebody could put a coop on that, in that space, in my mind, I mean, that's, you know, so I think that, that, you know, six to eight feet in that range would be adequate for chickens, quality of life wise and cleanliness wise and things like that.
It's big enough to get in and rake out the straw every few days and collect the eggs and it's tall enough, we don't have to scrouch, you know, scunge down. And, um, it's all boarded in up, it's all, well, we built a lot of pallets, but we took siding, middle siding and sided it outside. So no rain goes in and we have one side open for ventilation. And, um, it's tall enough, you know, you can, I have to stand on the ladder to reach the, the top. So, um, and we have lights and electricity, it's run by a light seduction cord, but we have electricity for keeping the hen house water warm during the winter. Um, so it's, it's, it's pretty rustic, but it works very well and nothing gets in it and they don't want to leave. I left the door open today and nobody came out, so they were happy, they're happy to be in their own stock.
Martha?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would point out that on the, uh, the sample code that we have in front of us on page three, uh, number five, it says, provide both a chicken coop and attached run, but afford a combined twelve square feet per chicken. Based on what Elliot and Patty were saying, if it was eight square feet per chicken and it was an eight chicken flock, it'd be sixty-four square feet, you know, like an eight by eight space. If it was ten feet per chicken and it was an eight chicken and an eight hen coop, uh, or flock, that'd be eighteen square feet. Uh, you know, to me, those, that, that all seems reasonable. And we, I mean, you know, my, what are my chicken credentials? Back when I was a Peace Corps volunteer in Thailand, admittedly thirty years ago, I was a, an advisor for the Future Farmers of Thailand Club on our campus. And I, we did a years-long chicken project and raised hundreds of chickens within, uh, it was less than a block, I said block from, but there weren't blocks, but on my campus, less than three hundred feet from the house that I lived in. And the, the agriculture teacher with whom I did that project had a, lived in a traditional Thai house even closer to, uh, the coop. But we had, he had chickens and pigs and ducks all living under his house and, uh, doing the, the roosting up, you know, and the eats just right underneath where they slung. I don't think anybody would propose that for here in, uh, two thousand nineteen, but, uh, but in my experience, you know, these are all reasonable numbers and ranges and that, that more disgusting, I think.
What I really want to know is, did you get one of those cool FSA blue jackets?
I think those were red. Thailand. And no, I didn't. Uh, I wasn't, uh, I was just an advisor.
Okay, all right. Six, did you?
Uh, no.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. I, um, have been interested in listening to what everybody had to say because like Todd, I don't have many chicken credentials, but it's a learning experience and I'm impressed with all the research everybody has done. And I summarized this as we went along, um, that they'd have a size of six to eight, possibly ten square feet per chicken and that size would be related to coops. The number of the flock, sold as four to six, no roosters, no free range chickens in town and a fenced area. And so my first question is, what would we do with the confiscated or unwanted chickens or roosters before the livestock auction that you talked about in Petersburg? And second of all, who would enforce the ordinances and who would police this to make sure that all this was happening so that the chickens that we would allow in the city would be treated fairly and the way they deserve to be treated? That's my biggest fear is I don't know who would police this and who would enforce this when we have to form another committee on who would take care of these chickens. Uh, I haven't heard that discussed and I think that was one of the things I had hoped to hear tonight.
Well, but for what it's worth, who enforces it now? Um, I, it's, as I understand it, all animal control is done by, is enforced by animal control, uh, and code enforcement. Maybe it's clear, more clear whether it's code enforcement or animal control. Um, and then there's the question of what happens on weekends when, you know, people are at home and, uh, maybe paying more attention to what's going on around their house. But the code enforcement and animal control people are not necessarily on the clock. So does that become then the Terre Haute police who are getting the call? These are all, you're right, these are all things that need to be resolved and clarified. They may or may not need to be actually clarified within this code because as long as we're not proposing a fundamental change in how it's already done, um, just goes in, it, it-
Well, it is a fundamental change because right now they're prohibited in the city limits. And so if you would change it to allow them in the city limits, you would have to make some kind of allowance as to who would take care of them and go out for inspections, uh, for licensing. Right now, if you have a dog or a cat that needs to be licensed, you would come to the city hall and apply for your license. Uh, I don't know who would, uh, who would issue licenses and how would you even tell if the people had their six to eight square feet per chicken, uh, how many chickens they had on their flock? That's just the part that worries me the most.
Well, I, I think the, there are two things you raised. One was an application process and one was an enforcement process. And I think those aren't, those are-
They are too.
They're, they're resolved differently.
I agree.
And I would think we'd follow something very close to what we do with the bees and what is currently going on, which is the, the application would take place at city hall and it's perhaps where public works, uh, probably. And that application process is already established for some other areas. So I think we would probably choose to, uh, follow something like that. In terms of enforcement, um, right now we have, I think in all enforcement, I think it's fair to say that how it at least is proceeding is it's proceeding in, in, is complaint-driven, uh, which is that you call, uh, either call, uh, the animal control code enforcement directly or most of it comes though through our, um, our, um, four one one, uh, three one one, sorry. My elevens mixed up here, three one one, uh, complaint system goes to, uh, from there to code enforcement and then they would go out. It's a complaint-driven process. It's not a, this is not a process where somebody comes out and okay's every, every, uh, establishment where people are having chickens. So that somebody has a, as you just, and several people here have described situations where people have chickens and, and, or have had chickens and no one would even know they were there other than if they're being cared for properly and that sort of thing. So I think that, that is how I would envision it working. I don't know about Todd and, you know.
I'm ready to hear it, you know? I'm ready to-
And when I, when I think about it, I think about it like Martha, like I, I just feel like that having to go and do inspections of these coops and all this stuff is really too cumbersome on, on animal control. You know, I mean, I, I think, you know, if we felt like, you know, just to kind of feel better about the people's planning process, if, you know, as a part of your, and I've seen this in other codes, as a part of your plan, you kind of just have to show, you know, what your plans are for your coop, you know, what the size is. And obviously, nobody's going to go check it, but at least you're, you know, it makes you aware of what the requirements are and you're showing what you're going to do. Um, you know, I think that's reasonable and I think, you know, all of our, you know, generally it's complaint-driven now and I think it could continue to be. I don't, I don't think, I think it's, it would be a lot to expect people to go and inspect those all the time.
I think so too.
You know, I mean, I, I'm not a proponent of that.
Me either.
No one goes around and inspects your yard, doghouse, you know?
No.
So, so I don't think that's an issue either. I, my cousin lives in Cleveland and they mailed all of y'all the Cleveland, uh, ordinance. And I asked, right, because that was brought up at the meetings, uh, the council meetings through code, is who's going to enforce the chicken, um, um, ordinance? And, uh, so I asked my cousin in Cleveland and she says, the police do, um, that they're called. And I said, well, how, do you know? And she's very an advocate, she's such an advocate and goes to meetings and stuff. So I said, well, how many police issues have you had in Cleveland? And they've been doing this for about ten years now. And, uh, she says, to her knowledge, none. So no one has turned in any complaints that she's aware of to the police station for, um, having chickens running wild or whatever.
I think different cities have their code enforcement handles different.
Right, right, exactly. So, but what I'm saying is that maybe, you know, we could investigate other ordinances and see what other people are doing or ask questions in, of other, uh, communities and see how they maintain, so we can kind of work our own system out through, um, example.
I think that's exactly what needs to be done. I mean, we need to expand on this a little bit. I was interested in what you said about the training at Rural King and you said, um, or you said there was programming available and then somebody said they need training. Uh, and I wondered if somehow we could incorporate the people that do this programming and training, uh, would be who we'd call, be called if there was a rooster that wasn't wanted and needed to be taken somewhere, because right now the city doesn't have any place to keep roosters or chickens that are not wanted.
There is a group of people, it's small, in, in this county that will take chickens if they're unwanted. Um, I don't recall who it is, but I can Facebook it and find it probably.
Yeah, that's what we need to do is find out those-
But they do have, there are people out in the country that, that will have taken chickens in. The problem that I have and that we have, uh, at home is vacationing. Who takes care of the chickens when they're not home?
That's a, that's a problem every pet owner has.
Yeah, but there is places to take your dogs and cats to be boarded. It's tough to board your chickens when you're gone. And so we, I have had chicken sitters stay in my house. I've had people that, you know, are egg customers that come and take the eggs and take care of the chickens while I'm gone. I've asked neighbors in the past. And so it's, that is to me the issue, the biggest issue that I have with having chickens in town.
Again, I, yeah, I don't think that's an ordinance issue.
No, but it's something to think about.
Something for somebody to think about.
Uh, regarding who would be responsible for impounding chickens on the loose, uh, the nineteen eighty, uh, nineteen eighty-nine municipal code spells out that pounds for impounding poultry and animals may be established by the Board of Park Commissioners and that the board is responsible for impounding and returning such animals to their owners.
I think that's, um, specific to the parks, that if they're found in the parks rather than, uh, uh, citywide.
Does public park, public parkway or public boulevard?
That could be a little broader then, sure.
It's broader. And then, um, regarding unwanted roosters, I know there's a farm in Indy that takes, in Indy are allowed to have one rooster. So people have more, it's, you pay them five dollars and it, they slaughter it, but it's humanely taken and, um, it's not your problem anymore.
Well, I think we, we did have some discussion again during the bee ordinance hearings about the possibility of there being, uh, a group of people locally who would voluntarily maybe add to the list of the people you already have. Again, not a direct part of the ordinance, but something that could be kept on file with code enforcement and with city offices and with Purdue so that that would be a service to the community, um, for purposes of the ordinance, but be even beyond the purposes of the ordinance.
To just act as a resource?
Yeah, as a resource.
Just like linking people with-
Yeah.
So we can form a committee, um, for chickens, uh, for the purpose of the betterment of chickens in the community.
Yeah, well, it sounds like there's already some groups that could possibly be added to, um, that, that would be there for.
I, I just, I need to keep stressing how important that is because, uh, she talked about a place in Indianapolis that would take the roosters and, and that would be wonderful, but how you would get the rooster to Indianapolis?
Yes, well, in fact, talk, talk about the people who locally are-
There are some local people. I don't recall them at the top of my head at the moment, but there are some local people that will take. In fact, I just met some at a friend's house about two weeks ago and she said she'd take any chickens.
That's why I think we should form a formal committee to address those things. And then I think a lot of the-
Well, at least to have a list of people, you know, that is available to do that sort of thing. And there's farms, I'm sure there's farms out here in the country that have kids or, you know, just have, you know, chickens out in the country that you could probably take them to too, but who are they? We would, it would be nice to have a small list.
So how many like roosters can you put in a given area? Can you, can a person take like ten roosters at a time? My understanding of roosters is that they're extremely territorial, so you can't, you know, that sink only works for so long.
As far as, I'm going to go back to my time in Illinois, we had roosters. I can't remember how many we had because, uh, like you said, somebody in the audience said earlier that when you order online-
Oh, yeah.
You don't always get, you don't always know for sure you're, oh, your hens are hens and not, there would one of them be a rooster or two. And then I had hens that actually nested and raised their own, or, you know, hashed chickens. And the hen to rooster ratio is way worse than you think. You get more males than females. So we would end up with roosters, but we butchered because we lived in the country and that's what you did. Um, so, um, we ate our roosters, you know, we'd get certain sizes and certain age before they got too old and we would eat them. But that's the country. In town, you wouldn't be doing that. So I don't want to say it's a good thing.
You can't slaughter, so I'll sit right here.
But, but on the whole, when you, and I have found this to be true, when you buy from the local vendors that sell hens and roosters and, and then a mix of the both, they're pretty sexed pretty decently because they are already a few days old and you can sex them pretty, much easier or better than you can when they're just hatched. I mean, there are tiny little things and it's hard to tell. So when they, before they ship them to the, to the, um, stores that sell them, they're generally sexed accurately. So, and it's always better to buy local.
Thank you, Pat. So something is kind of bothering me back here and I just, I just don't want to see a situation where we regulate so much that it's not fun anymore or we're too controlling. Like, it kind of bothers me that, like, if I lived in this, if, I mean, I live in the city, but if I didn't have my own zoning, if I want to get chickens and clip their wings and put up a fence, I want to be able to free range my chickens. Like part of free ranging your chickens is so that they can eat grass and bugs and all the other things that makes them omnivores and makes the eggs nutritious and the yolks orange and delicious. And I, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there for you to consider, like, hey, let's not, I, it rubs me a little bit the wrong way to say, hey, you have to have X number of feet per chicken, because everybody's yard is different and everybody's situation is different. I converted a horse stall and I have plenty of feet per chicken, but you know, like, do we, we don't tell people how many square feet they have to have in the yard for a dog or, you know, like, what are we doing here? You know, I just want to make sure we don't regulate the heck out of this so that it just, it's so controlling. I don't know, it's just, it's just like, it's just rubbing me a little bit the wrong way to think that we're, okay, you can have chickens, but you can't let them free range and you have to have so many feet and you have to have this and this and this and it has to go to classes and, and I, you know, anything that you have at your class, I can get on YouTube. I can buy a book. I can buy a book. I can read it on my own. I can read it at three o'clock in the morning, 'cause, or, or I work during the day, and I, I can't come, or I work at nine, and I can't come. And it's not really fair to say, "Hey, you have to go to this class, or you can't have chickens." Well, you know, that doesn't fit in with my lifestyle, maybe, but I can get the same information in a hundred different places. I can go to the library and get a book. So, I'm just throwing that out there to maybe, like, it's good to talk about all this stuff, but to force people into your little boxes, just 'cause maybe that's your experience, or you don't have experience, and you think it's a good idea, 'cause somebody said it, but I'm going to free-range my chickens. And, and if I'm in the city and I have neighbors close by, I can clip their wings, and I can get a fence, and it's not, they're not going anywhere. So, I don't know, it's just a thought.
Lori, I, I just respond to one thing about, uh, the numbers thing. When I talk about numbers, I'm talking about minimums, not maximums.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm, like, saying ten square feet per chicken, and I'm not saying that you can't have more. Uh, and I don't think that anything in the ordinance, uh, or this proposed ordinance addresses whether or not you erect a fence and let them free-range on the rest of your yard. Uh, that's, I mean, just for what, for what it's worth, you know, that's the way that I approach this, when I think about it. Now, the other, like.
Yeah, well, just, that's what I said when I, when I said, "If you want to free-range, you just need a fence in your property."
Yeah.
If you have a fenced-in property, let them free-range. They're not going to get out. If you, if you, if you have no fence between neighbors, they're going to free-range your neighborhood. So that's what I was, that's what I said earlier.
Yeah, I mean, this, this sample ordinance says, "Keep all chickens completely and securely enclosed and under the control of the harbor, on the harbor's property at all times." So it's not saying, you can't have them in your yard, it's just saying, you've got to keep them in your yard.
And I don't let mine free-range, because I don't want, my, I, my entire yard is a bed, and I don't want it torn up, because that's what they'll do. They'll scratch and dig and find bugs and worms and what have you. But my chickens get all my grass flipping, so that means the city or the county or whoever kicks up my trash doesn't get them. They get all the vegetable scraps, they get all the plantings, all my weeds that I don't like, they get those. They eat all the heck out of them. They eat asparagus, ferns, and all the berries on the asparagus. They eat every single piece of trash, including, uh, meat, out of my house that I have cooked, or not cooked or throwing away, that doesn't go to the garbage. So I am not only having chickens, but I'm also protecting the environment, because I give them every organic material that I have in my yard or my house to them. And I even, and this is going to sound strange, if I want to say it, I take my leftovers from restaurants and give it to my chickens, so they don't get my leftovers at the, at the restaurant, and have to throw it away into the environment either. So, and if I could be more due diligent, I would take my own container and give it to the restaurant, take home my scraps from the restaurant. And I have to, laughingly, I say to the restaurant people, because they think we need four containers, because there's four different things, and I go, "No, it all goes into one, because my chickens are going to eat it, and they're going to love it." Um, so I don't need, you know, someone to starve them containers to take home either. But, uh, they laugh at me, but they agree. They like it. Restaurants.
Hi, Lori Tharp, Terre Haute Code Enforcement, Animal Control. Um, I think it's, I applaud you people that have chickens, that do take care of them and enjoy their eggs that they bear. Um, unfortunately, there's a lot of people in our community who will not be as responsible as you, um, and we know where their chickens are at, or in the, in the city. We, we do that you have chickens, but we've never got a complaint, so we never approached you. Um, there's several places that have coops in town. Um, unfortunately, like I said, that's not going to be everybody who gets a chicken. A lot of people are going to get the chicken at Easter, out at Rural King, because their little kid wants a, "I want a chicken," so they'll buy, I believe, yeah, buy six at Rural King. They're going to buy six chickens for, I don't know, seven dollars, and take them home, and then they're going to end up, not neglect that they're not going to be cared for, like a lot of the animals in town. But my question is to the council, um, we consider chickens a vertebrate animal, and we have a limiting code enforcement in the city of Terre Haute, you're allowed to own six vertebrate animals. So, are you going to classify chickens as pets? Are you going to classify them as food? How are you going to classify them? Because if we raise it, and we say, "Okay," like Todd Nation said, you know, we could go up eight to ten chickens, so if we raise it, so where people can have ten animals, I mean, you can't really discriminate a chicken or a dog, I mean, you know, really, that's the way I see it. So are we going to let them have? They say, "Well, we don't want six chickens, we want six dogs, and we want twelve cats." I mean, how are we going to, how are we going to stop people from saying, "Okay, well, they got six chickens and three dogs and two cats, how come I can't have twelve dogs?" That's going to be a big problem for us. Um, so I just want to throw that out there. Are we going to, are we going to add to it? It's going to be a separate thing, you know? Chickens don't go under domestic animals, because I heard some people say it's become a pet. So it's a pet one day and supper the next? I mean, I don't understand it. So, I mean, you guys are going to have to give me some information, because I really don't understand it. I mean, and, and she's right about Indianapolis, you can take a rooster to Indianapolis, but what if that, what if those people in Indianapolis are on vacation? When I have three roosters, what am I going to do with them? But the people say, "Well, he's not coming back to my yard, I don't want that rooster. I don't have any place to take that rooster, so we're going to have to shoot that rooster." And that's not humane, it's not fair to the rooster, you know? It's not fair to the neighbors that have to listen to him every morning, afternoon, evening. So, I mean, there's a lot of thought behind this before you guys decide that we're going to allow chickens in the city, because there's a lot of people in the city that are not going to be responsible. And, I mean, that's just a fact. So, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Oh, Lori, Lori, would you mind sitting up for a second? Forgive me, I'm dealing with allergies. What, what's the experience with code enforcement been with those who currently have chickens in the city up to this point? Have there been a lot of issues, a lot of complaints?
No, no, we've had a few issues.
Okay.
Um, of, uh, renegade chickens, I guess you want to call them, running down the street. And we have had farmers, uh, police, at the police department will, we know some policemen that have farms, and will come say, "I got a chicken, you want a chicken?" Or, "We've got a rooster, you want a rooster?" Um, we've had a few calls, but I know the minute that they allow chickens in the city, it's, it's going to be like the pot-bellied pigs. I mean, we have pot-bellied pigs, they're supposed to be little tiny pigs, well, they're about three hundred pounds now, when, when you just feed them continually. And we've had five calls this year on pot-bellied pigs. So, I mean, it will all filter down to our department somehow, because animal control, like Todd said. Well, honestly, chickens fall under the zoning ordinance, not animal control, because right now, you have to be zoned agricultural in order to have chickens in the city. So it doesn't even fall under us to go cite you for chickens. We haven't wrote any tickets to anybody for chickens. We, we've told people, "You've got ten days to get rid of your chickens, because we've got a complaint." But our hands are tied. I mean, we called building inspectors out, and they can write in a ticket for zoning violation, but, you know, so, I mean, it's something, it's, it's a serious subject, and we need to really think about it. And, I mean, I'm all for it, if everybody would be as responsible as these people, as she is, as, as they are, but it's just not, it's not reasonable, it's not going to happen. People are going to mistreat these birds, and we're going to get stuck with them. That's the style of field.
There definitely needs to be coordination, there definitely needs to be resources in the community, people that are willing to come forward and say, "Okay, I can't keep it, but I can, if you've got hens, I can keep them with my flock until I can find somebody to get rid of them."
Right.
I could, I, I mean, I could easily take a half dozen or a dozen hens and still have plenty of room. And I know people that live in surrounding counties that have farms, that I could say, "Hey, you want some chickens?" They're always willing to take them. And in this case scenario, honey, we're having K-Pond for dinner. You know?
Right.
There definitely needs to be, um, more outreach, have the media say, "Hey, are you interested? Is this something you're interested in? Contact, you know, X, Y, Z, give them your contact information, that if we have something like this come up under urgency, do."
And I agree with her. There's a lot of people who are not familiar with the requirements of animal husbandry, the basic tenants of it, fresh water, clean space to live in.
Sanitation, yeah.
You know, I, I've been to some places that are just horrible.
Like you said, I mean, you can't do it, actually, it almost seems like it needs to be a separate category, instead of this so many bird rape, because, like you said, somebody is going to come forward and say something stupid like that. I don't want to have twelve dogs on my.
They will, they absolutely will, right.
Yeah, so there definitely needs to be accountability, and I agree with all, now we're regulating it too, but there, like, needs to be a balance. So, and, you know, if we make it a little bit tricky, I don't want to, maybe that's not, it needs to be a responsible.
Right.
Responsibility needs to be the first part of it.
That's correct.
You can go to Rural King or Tractor Supply, talk to people that work there, and every year, every year, they get somebody coming in, "We bought these chickens, now they're, or these chicks, now they're chickens. Do you know anybody who wants to get rid of it?" Asking store employees. So if they're, there's got to be a way to get it out in the public somehow, that, "Hey, there, if you bite off more than you can chew, here are some community resources."
And then will, people will, because they're so cute when they're little.
No, but they're just adorable.
So, and, yeah, and we don't want to make garages, too, because that's what they'll do. Well, we've got a garage, we let them stay in there. I mean, that's exactly what's going to happen, because they do that with their dogs and cats right now. So, but no, we have, no, Curtis, we haven't had a whole lot of problem with chickens.
Okay, thank you.
Something else, too, is chickens' life, life expectancy is not really long, so, and they start, stop laying as they get older, so that's something to consider as well, is, is how long do you keep, how long do individuals are actually keeping chickens? Because we, like I said earlier, we have nine, and I probably get five eggs a day, so not, everybody's laying every day.
What is their lifespan?
Uh, roughly six or seven years.
And we usually, we usually let her go about three or four.
Yeah, because they stop laying.
Yeah, when they're, when they're laying every, you know, eight days, and you're keeping them.
It gets expensive, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of like, "Oh, I don't like it that much."
And they get ill. We had one pass away this, just this summer, this spring. I think it was so wet and everything, and got a disease of some sort, and we died. Probably were on vacation.
It was the first time it got really, really humid, and it gave it sure, was about a hundred, and we lost a cat.
So you do have deaths easily.
I don't want to cut off discussion, we've been here for just about an hour, um, and what I would see happening, I've just, what I would see happening from here is that we would schedule another meeting, uh, we can continue here for a little while, if people want to do that, but we would schedule another meeting, uh, as we've structured this committee, we need to make a recommendation as a committee, um, to at least things that we'd like to see, um, in, addressed in a, in any ordinance, it wouldn't be the ordinance itself, but things that, because that has to be structured in a certain way, fit in with existing, um, laws and stuff. So, that we would make a recommendation, we would come back another time, um, and look at that recommendation, and, you know, okay it or not, okay it, either would be fine, but, uh, and certainly, we've raised a lot of valuable issues already tonight that would need to be taken into consideration for that. Are there other ones that people in the committee see that we haven't gotten to yet tonight that you'd like to?
I'd like, I'd be really stressed.
No, 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 it's fine. I, I don't mind just staying longer, I just don't want to overstep people's schedules here.
There were just a couple of notes that I made on the, and I think we've talked about a lot of them, the, the other, probably two things that kind of popped out at me were, one, that, you know, in this proposed, you know, draft, or not proposed, but the draft that we're kind of working off of, that it states that the, you know, I guess, I don't know if it would be the coop or the enclosure, kind of, it's kind of murky, but that it's twelve feet from the lot line, which, that's a pretty long way in the city lot, um, for twelve, I mean, you have to have a pretty big yard to get twelve feet on either side, so I think there should be some amount, I mean, I don't think you want your chicken coop butting up against your neighbor's yard, or they might not like that, but I feel like that's a little more than what is probably necessary. And then the other thing is just some language in the, you know, in there about, you know, keeping, I mean, you definitely need to keep your, your run and stuff, you know, adequate ventilation, adequate sun and shade, but then it says, "It's impermeable to rodents," and I don't know of anything that's impermeable, impermeable to rodents, so, I mean, so I think maybe that language, you know, would be, you know, you'd need to, you know, you definitely, I mean, almost every ordinance I read says, "You've got to keep your food and stu-, you know, your stored food in a container that is rodent-proof, because, I mean, they will get into it if you don't." Um, and you need to, you know, keep them safe from predators at night and things like that, but, but impermeable to me, I was like.
Impermeable was the one that got me, huh?
I know, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but, I was like, that's.
We have mice and cats, and I haven't figured out how the mice get in, but they get in, and it's something like, it's just there. And the chickens actually, as lo-, as much as I hate to even say this, got into a mouse nest and ate the babies, because they're, they are carnivores.
Yeah.
A full mouse.
The impermeable word there was your concern.
Yeah, I just thought, that was kind of like, that, that's just not possible, in my opinion, but I, you know, you do need to keep them safe from predators, obviously.
Anything bigger than mice.
Yeah.
Kelly, uh, your point about, um, the distance from the property line is something that I had flagged too for discussion. What do you think's a reasonable number?
I, I mean, I guess the thing is, are we talking about, you know, you know, we talked about, you know, free-ranging in a bigger space, we talked about coops, and we talked about runs, and those are all kind of different beasts, you know, because you've got your coop, which is where your hens lay, and they nest, and, you know, that's usually where they sleep at night, you know, and then you've got, you know, if you have an enclosed run area, you know, that is one space. I mean, I would think that, you know, you'd probably want to have, if you've got an enclosed coop, I would think you'd want to have that, I don't know, maybe three or four feet from your lot line? Um, you know, but I think it, I, I don't, it kind of just depends on the nature of your coop, too, so I, I would, I mean, I guess I lean just arbitrarily towards three to five feet from the lot line, um, but.
When we were talking about bees, uh, we talked about this a lot, it ended up, I think, five feet away, uh, from the, from the property line. Um, you know, what you need to picture is your, is a small city lots, and houses right up against each other, and, uh, and fences in between them, how close is too close to that fence that's between, that's, that separates your property from the neighbors? Or else.
Say that again?
How close to the house? How close is your coop to the neighbor's house?
Well, and that was a separate.
I could be at the edge of my property and be away from all the houses, but there are parts of my property that would be right next to my neighbor's house, even over sixty-five feet away.
Well, and that's actually addressed separately in the code, where it says, um, in this, you know, in this kind of draft, of, of a working draft, is it's twenty feet from any building not owned or occupied by the person who has the chicken. So, you know, you'd be obligated to have your coop twenty feet away from your neighbor's house, which I think is totally reasonable. I mean, I don't think you want to force your neighbors to be right next to your chicken coop. I mean, I think, you know, you can put it at the back of your lot, and that's an adequate amount of space. So I think that twenty feet is totally reasonable, I just think that lot line, you know, is, 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 that twelve, you know, the actual property line is a little bit.
Yeah, and I think one of the concerns with the bees was, uh, people having someone, like a neighbor being allergic to the bees, or, or something of that sort, too, so that's a little bit different that, that, in this situation, perhaps.
But I, I'm, uh, basically agreeing with you, that I think that a smaller amount, uh, or a smaller distance from the fence is good, uh, you know, I would just throw five feet out there for a working number. And then, um, the, to me, uh, having language in there about its distance from buildings that you don't own, uh, is reasonable, too, and I think the twenty-foot number that's in the draft is reasonable, but I'm willing to hear. hear it.
The only thing about buildings you don't own is oftentimes if you have a garage, they're usually at the back end of the house, of the lot.
Yeah, this one says for human habitation. So it specifies like a garage would not apply, but the house would apply, which I think is amazing.
Because a lot of people put sheds and what have you in the back of their yard. So, so also with that said is the coop, could it be, would it be placed in the back of the yard like a metal shed that you buy for a couple hundred dollars to be put in the back of the yard? You know what I'm saying? Where you store your lawnmowers and stuff? You know, if we did one of those, would that be at the back of the yard on the property line? Or does that have to be five feet from the property line too? So that's... And then they buy, people buy those little funky little chicken houses that are two feet by four feet. You know, that's, that's a coop, but it's a tiny little thing and not really big. So I'm just saying.
Things to think about.
I think you have a minimum amount per chicken and that kind of resolves that issue.
I'll just throw one other thing out there that I flagged for what it's worth. The language contemplates a one-year license. I noticed when Patty forwarded us through Cleveland language that it's all two-year. So you go and deal with the paperwork once, you pay your fee and then you're good for two years. Are we willing to consider something like that or is that something that is, is that too much? Is that too lenient to, to say, all right, well, you come in and pay and do it all and then we see again in two years? Or is there a value?
Cut down on the paperwork that you would have.
Well, that's what I was thinking, you know, from a bureaucratic point.
Put a contingency, if there was a complaint, if this code enforcement had been called, that that would go against you, that you would not be getting a license again. If they had, you know, you had three strikes and you're out. That's something simple. If you, you know, somehow got a rooster or you're not keeping it clean, you know, I know code enforcement logs all that stuff, so that could very easily be coordinated to, you know, make people be a little bit more accountable maybe. What do you think?
Well, I like that idea because that would make them accountable, plus it gives you some leverage from taking their chickens away.
I didn't see you want it to be complaints. If there were something like that, it would have to be substantiated complaints that resulted in some sort of, there are some civil, and it's in there, there are civil, civil penalties for having violations. So you wouldn't want it to be just a complaint, you'd want it to be an actual violation and there would be a civil action taken if there, if there were that sort of complaint. And we would, and we would have a record of that. But, good point, but I think that would be covered. Anything else? Yes?
I think it's important, I think it's important to look at the obvious too, that I'm originally from Arizona and all the laws and every, all the regulations and the guidelines all shifted away from agricultural to municipal. And they outlawed having chickens, they outlawed having more than one dog, two dogs. Now there's a shift now back the other way because they say, well, maybe there's lots of parkers. And I know that towns like Phoenix, Scottsdale, Chandler, they're all looking at different ways to address this chicken thing. And some of them, like Maricopa, have decided that it's okay to have chickens in the city as long as, you know, within reason, like what we've been talked about, and not having roosters. And that seems to be working out pretty well for them. And I know other municipalities around the country have done the same thing. When we do it, we just have to make sure that, number one, it's respectful. That we are respectful of our neighbors and respectful of chicken husbandry, you know, and, and everything goes the way it should. It's when people start to ignore those things that make sense, you know?
Okay. Well, I think we'll proceed then. Would you like a list of available dates? Yes, we, we need to schedule another hearing and I will be getting back to committee members just recapping the kinds of things that we talked tonight and if, and we'll have the opportunity to tell me what I've forgotten. But I do want to say before, we will select a date for next meeting and then also just to say to everyone who came tonight, both our code enforcement people, we appreciate you coming, and those members of the public who came to share their concerns and their expertise and ideas with us, and all the committee members, thank you so much. So you got some dates for us?
Do you know how soon you would like to meet again?
Yes, I think we, we need to approve recommendations, is that correct?
Yes, so one week, two weeks, three weeks?
Is this time of day, first of all, of those who present, is this a decent time of day for you generally, not just tonight? Okay. I would say, not before the election.
Thank you.
It's an okay to say.
So for example, November 7th and 14th are both city council meeting days, so I excluded those. November 11th, city hall is closed, doesn't mean we can't meet, but city hall is closed for Veterans Day. So we have 11:12 and 11:15. The 15th is a Friday, so I assume no one would want to meet that night.
What does November 12th look like for people?
It's also for me.
That's a Tuesday.
Should be good.
Okay, let's, let's take that one.
4:30 again?
Yes, please.
And also send a notice out about two days beforehand.
Okay. Thank you. So we will, for those members of the public who are here who are interested, we will meet again on November 12th at 4:30, right here. Thanks so much. Have a good evening.
We are adjourned.
So moved.